Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 18th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Carroll. So would you please join, join us, rise and join us.
Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Mr. Sanchez, roll call, please. Talazar, sorry.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Chairman Jackal, or Commissioner Jackal.
Commissioner Jackal, okay. We're both going to have a good evening tonight, it sounds like.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, before us are the minutes from the meeting of September 4th. Are there any changes to the minutes? And if not, can we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Carroll?
I'll make a motion to approve, as written.
Okay, and Commissioner Kramer?
Second to motion.
It's been moved and second to approve the minutes from the September 4th meeting. Please cast your vote. And the minutes are approved unanimously by the Commissioners present. Commissioner Jackal is absent. Ms. Chow, any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Chairman Rossler. No changes tonight.
Okay. For the Rancho students, I believe tonight's meeting will be relatively short. So we're going to do both public hearings and then we'll sign your forms at the end of the meeting. If it drags on, we'll, past an hour, we'll have a staff member meet you out in the hallway and sign your forms there. So, anyway, there is one change to the agenda. Commissioner Carroll is leaving us and we are going to be sad to see him go. He is an engineer, a civil engineer, and we have, I have appreciated his expertise, plus his, he's been on the Commission for seven years. And that means you set through all the general plan hearings when we redid the general plan. And those were, those were hundreds of meetings, at least a few hundred meetings. So, a lot of service to the city. And, in that end, I have certificate appreciation awarded to Michael Carroll in recognition of exceptional service to the community since January 11th, 2011, while serving on the Planning Commission in the City of Vista, California. And this is signed by Mayor Ritter and Kathy Valdez, City Clerk. So, Michael, we are sorry to see you go, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item on our agenda is Oral Communications. And I do have two oral communications slips from Maria Levett and two issues that you would like to address us on. You'll have three minutes each.
Thank you.
Oh, let me explain to the audience, I'm sorry. Oral communications are an opportunity that the Commission gives to the public to speak on items that are not on our agenda. Since they aren't on our agenda, we can't discuss them, but we can take and listen to people who would like to address the Commission on issues in the community. So, Ms. Levett?
Thank you so much for your time this evening. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that really were concerning me. The city has grown quite a bit and quite fast. Our shopping centers have grown and we have families that frequent them quite often. And honestly, it's been a ration of no restrooms available. You find that you go into a shopping mall in here half a mile away, even just down the street, you'll find that there's posted, no restrooms available. And you're a patron, you'd hope that you would be able to find some sort of relief, even if you have your child or even yourself. You spend money there, you should be able to find some sort of comfort that you can relieve yourself and not have to rush home. I find myself finding comfort outside of the City of Vista. I actually go out to Oceanside or actually Los San Marcos, where I find that I do have restrooms available for my family and myself. I've asked these questions to the patrons in regards to why they don't have that, and it's unfortunate that we do have a big problem with homelessness. There apparently is 352 homeless people on the City of Vista today, and there could be more. So I understand the validity of why they don't have restrooms available for people who actually patron their stores, but it doesn't mean that we should be locked out. I do hope that the City of Vista will profit and make restrooms available. I do know there is a restroom here in the, in this park here, but the majority of people that do frequent that are homeless. And I hope that you see that on a regular basis, but I really would like you guys to look forward and move into having these businesses or building a facility for your patrons. If you guys could look into that, that would be great. There are families that do go to places, so it is really important. So I know that these teenagers who probably go to these places and see that they cannot be relieved and they have to rush home. So that's one of my concerns.
Okay.
I don't know how much more time I have for that. But I did also want to bring up another problem that we have in the City of Vista. Major jaywalking, red light runners, since you guys have taken the red lights out, there's been a mass, mass, majority of people running red lights. And it's not just the drivers, we got cyclists, we got jaywalkers, and it impedes a lot of people that are going to and from work. And not only are they running the red lights, but they are huge trucks. There's a lot of work that's going on down here on the East Vista Way. And I have clocked, I think it was four trucks that ran a red light, and it was a loaded truck. And I did call the City of Vista, I called the Vista Sheriff's Department to inform them what was going on. And they did, they did put some police officers on that site, and it ceased for a while. I don't know if we need to continue educating folks that safety is not just the driver's responsibility, but being a walk, you know, walking on the sidewalk, you're not, just because you're a pedestrian doesn't mean you do have the right of way. You also have laws that you need to abide by. You need to stop at that red light, that red hand that says you have 11:15 seconds to get across the street, or wait. And the majority of the time, I have to say, that some of those lights do not turn very fast. I do live up the street here, and I have to say those lights up there suck, okay? I can't turn left onto East Vista Way, it'll take me about seven minutes. And sometimes, if I'm lucky, that light will stay red over two times. So, I know that the Sprinter has caused a lot of major problems. And I hope that you guys, being the Commissioners, would be able to come up with some sort of ramp and make that maybe an expressway out to the 76. Maybe put some overhead walkways. I know I brought this up over seven years ago. You know, putting, putting walkways and stoplights really, really impedes, and I'm sure that it adds a lot of financial restraint on our city. I don't know if the safety issue regarding having those walkways is a major insurance problem, but I would really like you guys to consider that. Overhead walkways at schools, it would be easier, you know, going 25 miles an hour on a 35 mile an hour zone, especially at the busiest time of the day, in the morning. It really, you don't see people slowing down for the 25 mile an hour zone. So thank you so much for your time. I hope that you consider what I said tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is our public hearings. I'm sorry? Yeah. In our public hearings, we will have a report from the planning staff. We will give the applicant an opportunity to address the commercial commission and let us know all the finer details of the project. Then we will open it up to the public to speak. Right now, I only have one speaker card from the applicant. So if you want to address the Commission on either of the two public hearings tonight, you need to speak, fill out a speaker slip and give it to our recording secretary. After the public has, testimony has been taken, we will close the public hearing, open it up to discussion amongst the Commissioners, and then we will make a decision on the project. So, our first public hearing is Classic Chariots Automotive Service Center. Mr. Connolly, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is a continued public hearing from July 17th. So we're revisiting an item that was continued regarding a site development plan, tentative parcel map, and special use permit. The project's site is 129 Grapevine Road. It's 1.45 acres in size, one legal parcel. It's shown on the right here in the aerial photo at the corner of Grapevine and West Vista Way. Includes a drainage that runs through the site from the northeast to the southwest corner. It's commercially zoned and designated in our general plan and has a history of prior uses that are included in the staff report. The site development plan would develop the site with a 14,522 square foot service center building, which would be located in the back of the site in the northern, northwestern portion of the property. Would be a two-story building with a maximum height of about 33 feet. Would include 18 enclosed repair bays for the servicing of vehicles and seven exterior parking spaces. The 18 bays would also count toward their parking, so they would be well over their parking requirement. There's vehicle display areas proposed down in the south and the eastern portion of the site, and the drainage channel that runs across the site would be preserved and fenced. There was some discussion about the fencing last time, which has been revised. There would be associated improvements, including street improvements, curb, gutter, sidewalk, et cetera. And the proposed commercial billboard is to remain. This is the floor plan of buildings we covered the last time. Not to go into too much detail here, the first floor includes the repair bays in the back and the offices in the front for sales and service. And there's parts of storage on the second floor. A cross-section of the repair building showing the repair garages in the back on the left and the two-story portion of the facility on the right with a tower element in the front that's more of a decorative feature. These are the elevations. We talked about the yellow is a wood, an unfinished wood material. The rest is primarily block with metal awnings, more of a modern look that, to match the existing dealership across the street. Some architectural elevations showing the site from West Vista Way. This would be the south elevation. And then showing the site from the corner, which would include the billboard, the property, the building, excuse me, is back on the left behind a vehicle display area. And then on the right is another vehicle display area that would be across the channel. Just to show the street improvements that would be included along the frontages of both such streets. This is the wood material we talked about last time that would be on the building, just to give you an example. Landscaping plan includes over 15 percent, I think it's 30 percent of the site approximately would be landscaped around the building and the display areas with some street trees that would meet our standards. At the public hearing in July, the Planning Commission requested that it be continued because they want additional information about the commercial billboard and whether the city could condition its removal upon the approval of the project. And we renoticed the public hearing for tonight. So we've looked into the billboard. It was established prior to the city's incorporation, so it is a legal, non-conforming structure on the property. Under state law, just compensation has to be paid if the city's going to force the removal of the billboard. So just compensation of the billboard is determined to be net present value, can be calculated many different ways. But in terms of the lease revenue that the owner collects and the lease revenue that the billboard company collects, we estimate that in order for us to require its removal and pay the net present value would be in the high six figures to over a million. Probably with legal costs and other costs, it'd be well over a million, in my opinion. And so once we presented that to the city manager, we've received no direction from the city council to move forward with bringing this to the council. So absent that, staff's not recommending a condition to remove the billboard. The Commission can take any action that they want on the project tonight in terms of the special use permit and site development plan that's before you. And then if the council wants to revisit the billboard, they have the ability to appeal your decision. So the staff recommendation tonight essentially is to move forward with your decision on the project, and if the council wants to consider it, they may. Also to cover one item, which I didn't discuss, was the fencing, which was brought up the last time, around the channel. There is a proposed new wrought iron, six-foot-high fence that would go around the entire channel on both sides and the street frontage, so it would wrap the channel for safety purposes. And that's included in the revised plan that was provided to you along with the staff report. And so with that, the recommendation is to approve the project. It was originally presented, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of staff? I have the speaker slip from the applicant. Does he wish to address the Commission?
I just want to let you know I'm here, in case if there's any questions.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any, we'll open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker slips. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, Mr. Connolly, I just have a question about the, what will be, I guess it would be the east side over where Primo Foods is?
Yes.
Will there be a fence and what kind of landscaping? Because that's a pretty bad area now.
The area will have landscaping, as shown here. It looks like a line of shrubs that would go along that eastern boundary and a tree in the corner there next to the channel. As far as fencing, it doesn't appear to show fencing here. We can ask the applicant if they're intending to put-
It's a chain-linked fence now.
So we want to call the applicant up and see if he's intending to put up any fencing besides what's there today. It's not a requirement at the perimeter of a commercial property that shares a commercial zone.
Sorry. Would you repeat your question, please?
The question is, on the east side over by Primo Foods, what is the plan for that area? Because right now, it's in pretty sad shape. I don't know if it's, you know, on your side or the neighbors', but it's pretty, pretty junky. So the question is, what is there, or what will you put there and, you know, to make that more attractive?
My thinking, just off the top of my head, is just to basically be open between us and them. And I don't know if any suggestions, anything. I can just put it over your face.
I know you've proposed landscaping there.
Sure.
But it looked like the landscaping's not going to be very tall, so my thought is, if you had taller shrubs or something there to block all that you see on your neighbor's side.
Basically, you don't want, from my side, to be able to see the neighbors, like that Primo part?
Well, not so much see them, but, you know, maybe, maybe it's more the neighbor's problem, but, you know, it's, it really looks terrible.
We tried to do as best, sure. I mean, we could talk, last time, the lady was here, the owner, asking, you know, asking her to do something about it. But as far as I think, you know, we can talk, you know, just do as clean as possible, since this project is pretty nice and clean, you know, once we're doing, for sure we'll do something good.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was, the junky stuff was on your side or the junky stuff was on their side.
Their side.
It's hard to say.
Their side, yeah.
Oh, it was?
Nothing on my side.
Okay.
My side basically looks the first picture, you know, the show's here.
Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. Last time we heard this application, the fence around the drainage swale was, was an issue. And I see you've come back with a six-foot-high wrought iron fence. Right now, we've got, what, a six-foot-high wire mesh fence?
Chain link.
Chain link fence. And code-wise, if I was building a private swimming pool, I need a five-foot-high fence to keep the neighbors' children out of my backyard for that pool. Personally, I think the six-foot-high fence is going to look the same as the chain-link fence that we've got out there now. I think it's going to, visually, it divides the parcels, it divides the parcel in two. But if we are concerned about safety, if we could bring that down to five feet and limit the distance that five-foot fence goes into the property, maybe it goes in 15 feet, maybe it goes in 25 feet. But I think visually, to keep the eastern part of the property visually connected to the western, that six-foot-high fence is going to not look good. And I like the theme that you started with, this rope. I don't see children playing in your parking lot. And so if it's still an issue that we need the fence along the sidewalk area, then I would pose to the Commissioners, let's bring it down to five feet to where it's more in scale with what is being done on the property.
Is that just along the street frontage or up both sides of the channel?
I would keep it on this, alongside the sidewalk. And then again, I would bring it in. Let's see. Could you bring up that site plan, please, John?
The landscape plan or the site plan itself?
Site plan. A natural break would be this point here. Is this the same one on sheet A101.0?
Yeah. It's just smaller, sorry, it's not at the scale.
Okay. Well, we've got the fence that comes along here, and then we've got the biofiltration system.
Yes.
And this fence doglegs kind of to this point here. And that might be a natural breakpoint.
Sure.
Same thing on the west side of the fence, where you have your new car display and where that backs up to your biofiltration system. I think that's a natural breakpoint, too.
Sure.
Those are just some suggestions that I think would aesthetically improve the plan and then at the same time provide that public safety that was an issue last time. You came before us.
Commissioner Kramer?
Counsel me for right now, please.
Okay. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I would agree with Commissioner Looney that, you know, the fencing along the channel or lack thereof on the initial plan was never a real concern for me with, whether it's the bollards and ropes, I was all fine with that. It was just the idea of some sort of additional protection along the sidewalk. There, you're going to get maybe miscellaneous family pedestrians that were, that back of sidewalk could really benefit from a fence near the head wall. But as far as in between the two, two sections of property, I agree, it's, it's going to look worse than, than nothing at all or than the bollards. And as far as the rest of the project, I was completely happy with the project as previously presented, and it was only the, the issue of investigating the possibility of the removal of the billboard that was holding it up for me. And I would not be interested in trying to condition the project to have the city pay a million plus in order to get rid of, in order to, for a project like this to be built, because I think this project will be an enhancement to the property.
Commissioner Garretson?
I disagree that that fence should not be there. Now it's a chain-linked fence, it looks terrible, and people are coming on both sides of it on a regular basis. They're walking down through the creek and up the other side. There are regular paths there. So when there's a lot of water there, to me, that's going to be a real safety issue. Especially if we can't put it up enough to where the kids walking around there, you know, are unsafe. So maybe there's a compromise of putting it partway up, five feet, but I, I think it's asking for trouble, kids cutting across there, especially when, when there's a lot of water in the creek.
Commissioner Bell?
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, are you suggesting that once the project is built, your concern is the kids will cut across the parking lot into the basin and then across the other parking lot still? I'd be curious if the applicant or the city has a response to that from the way the development's laid out, if that's a concern. Do you have it with your current car lot? Is that an issue that happens?
No, I don't really have an issue. I don't have anybody walking around. But if someone builds, it's going to be basically cars, and, I mean, I don't think, I haven't seen anybody crossing through that lot.
It's probably not appropriate to ask a poll of the entire audience to see how many people would walk through a lot like this, right? And just from my own anecdotal evidence, I would tend to agree more with Commissioner Looney. I understand your concern about that completely, because if there is a dip there and there's kids walking through it, there's absolutely a safety concern. I think once a project has been built and there's an active lot with cars and people working and even small rope fences, the, the ability for anybody to want to cut through is lessened by the trouble that it makes, as opposed to just walking around the corner, because it's not that much of a shortcut. And if there's an active, beautiful sidewalk with landscaping that's put in, then all of a sudden, it's much easier to walk around the sidewalk. So I don't, I understand your concern, I don't share it. I tend to agree with Commissioner Looney that some level of protection at the sidewalk level is fine, but taper it off and get rid of it a couple of feet in, once the sidewalk's protected.
So you're suggesting that we should leave the chain-linked fence, the full length of it?
No, my suggestion would be that the wrought iron at five feet, per Commissioner Looney's suggestion, would be at the sidewalk itself and come back several feet on both sides. And then from there, either revert to the rope or another design that leaves the view open, so customers coming into the repair lot can see the cars on the other side, and there's some kind of connection there. I think if you put a giant five or six-foot fence up between the two, it completely separates the property. And we can't do anything about the drainage channel, you have to leave that there, that's part of the landscape and it has to be there. But I think we can at least make the site a little bit appealing and balance it with the safety concerns, certainly. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Sure.
By the way, the water down there is only about a couple of inches. The last 11 years I've been there, I haven't really seen the water being raised up, and we get a report forever, never, basically, water knocking up there. But I'm very, you know, agree with Commissioner Looney, you know, if we do in the front, with the fence, and along the side of the creek, we put a rope, if you want, we can just basically, you know, two, two ropes, one in a one feet, one in a three or four feet, basically, make him a repair here. Honestly, my own personal opinion, if you put a fence right, it looks like, really, really bad, looks like, I don't know, jail, nobody want to come, because the people come in and see the beautiful project, all of a sudden, you know, it's just going to go.
Okay, thank you. I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
The sign company leases the, the sign, the property for the sign from you.
That's correct.
And it's my understanding that you just signed a new 15-year lease with them?
It wasn't new 15 years, this is the way it started. When I purchased, it's about four years ago, and the people who own them before, they had a contract with these people since 1999. When I purchased it, the previous owner financed me half of the property, and I had basically handshake with them to continue it. And the previous owner, they were collecting their rent from them for the mortgage.
Okay.
Okay? Then after that, when we finished last year, when I refinanced- when I refinanced, our award basically stayed the same with them. Okay, we had basically like a 15 years of the leasing and a five-years option.
Okay.
Since City of Vista has something to show on the paper, when I got back with them, that was basically, we had to bring them something, show them to you. That was on the paper. I actually did something good for myself or city, if you would have bought that. I put them, you know, 30 days notice. Basically, my negotiation and handshake with them was, okay, you're going to be there for 15 years.
Okay.
But on this time, basically, put it 30 days, no cancellation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kramer.
Excuse me. I've lived in Vista since 1977 for a long time and that billboard's been there. And I don't ever have a recollection of the materials being inappropriate or like I see in LA when I go back home. They have billboards and half the billboard is gone. And so you, so the people that are, it isn't you that's required to put the materials up. You just lease, they just lease the land where it stands from you and they're required?
I leased it to one company. That company goes out there, sell basically.
Got it, sells the ad.
Advertising.
Okay.
When the people pay them and they basically make the material, go up there, put them on the billboard.
Mr. Connolly, a question. Can't do this on my recollection, but should there, is there a need to even protect the applicant if there were a condition that says that the billboard's got, the maintenance of the billboard has got to be maintained as long as he's holding the lease? Something that makes it so we don't have, you know, Chipotle, half of Chipotle's gone and, you know, we got only half the ad there or?
So the landowner and the billboard owner, two different entities, right? Lamar owns the billboard. It's a non-conforming structure. So the way our code handles non-conforming structures is you can't touch it.
Okay.
And ultimately, it's either going to be taken down to accommodate some future use or it's going to fall down and it can't be rebuilt. But that's the way non-conforming structures are handled.
Okay. So I would say, based on the history of that billboard from my perspective, and I live off of Olive, that it's always been very well-maintained. So I don't have any issues, nor did I last time we met with the billboard. I think everything is fine. And if we resolve the issue with the fencing along the creekway, I'm willing to go with it. Thank you, very much in support.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear from the rest of the commissioners. We've heard from Commissioner Looney on his position on the billboard. Or Commissioner Carroll, I'm sorry. Where are the other commissioners on with the billboard? You guys are okay with it, okay?
I'm okay, based on what we know now.
Okay.
Especially a million-dollar price tag.
I was going to suggest that maybe we condition it's a removal and then they could appeal to the city council. And the council could decide whether they wanted to spend the money to remove it. But there certainly are a lot more things in the city that we can spend a million dollars on besides the removal of a billboard. Okay. Commissioner Garretson, you wanted to be recognized?
Yes. My understanding that the majority of the commission now would be okay with putting the wrought iron fence a certain distance and then putting a two-level wood rope fence the rest of the way, where the employees could get through and get to the other side? Is that what we're saying or?
I don't think there's any intent for the employees to get to the other side. We asked that question, was there going to be any pedestrian traffic across there at the last hearing? And they said no. So I think it's just.
Well, when I was there, employees were going back and forth across there. So it's got a path.
Yes. Well, in case if you saw anybody going through there.
How about we just put a condition on there that there's to be no access into the creek area of any employee?
That'll work for me.
All right.
I'll police them myself.
So we, I think we have a solution for the fence. Can we hear a motion to approve then, if we're not going to address the billboard? And maybe Commissioner Looney can articulate his condition for us and then we'll go from there. So make a motion to approve the project as presented.
Make a motion to approve number P160312, as written, with the condition or modification of the six-foot wrought iron fence being removed and substituted with a five-foot-high wrought iron fence adjacent to the public sidewalk that would extend that five-foot wrought iron fence at the hinge point of the biofiltration basin on the east side. And the transition would be at the biofiltration and the new car vehicle display on the west side. And then from that point, we would have the peeler pole with a rope barrier across the, to border the drainage swale.
Okay, very good. Is there a second, Commissioner Garretson?
I will second the motion.
Okay, commissioners, we have a motion to approve with Commissioner Looney's additional condition. And a second, please cast your vote. And the motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Jackal being absent again. All right. Still, still absent. You're good. Congratulations. All right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for an amendment to a previously approved special use permit and site development plan for the North Melrose Self-Storage LP. Mr. Russell, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the planning commission.
One moment, hang on. Thank you. Commissioner Carroll had a disclosure.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to disclose that I use this particular storage facility. I don't have a lease in my name. I don't pay for the unit. I just use it via as a volunteer for Cub Scouts. And our charter organization, the Salvation Army, is actually the leaseholder. So I have no financial interest in the storage facility or the unit itself. So just disclosing that, but I will be commenting and participating on the subject.
Okay, very good. Sorry, Mr. Russell, you can start again.
Sure, the project before you tonight is the North Melrose Self-Storage Facility Expansion. The application number is P16-0523. The project includes a proposed amendment to a previously approved special use permit and a site development plan. The subject site is located on the west side of North Melrose Drive, just north of North Avenue. The site is 6.25 acres. It's two legal lots. And it's currently developed with the 143,800-square-foot self-storage facility as well as an associated outdoor recreational vehicle storage area. The area, the project area is 1.64 acres and it is the recreational vehicle storage area within the self-storage facility. The surrounding land uses around the subject site include an industrial park to the east across North Melrose Drive, contractor storage yards to the south, and single-family homes and an apartment complex to the west. The general plan land use designation for the site is industrial general, IG, which allows for manufacturing warehouse as well as outdoor storage. The zoning of the site is specific plan number eight, which allows for a variety of industrial uses, including manufacturing, warehousing, as well as outdoor storage. The North Melrose Self-Storage addition would require an amendment to a previously approved special use permit and a site development plan. That application was PC8-092. The request before you tonight includes demolition of the existing recreational vehicle storage lot and a construction of a new 34,900-square-foot two-story self-storage building on 1.64 acres. The proposed building would be located at the southwest corner of the existing self-storage facility site. The building again would be 34,900 square feet. Access to this area of the site is provided by a 24-foot-wide driveway, an existing driveway that links the project area to the remaining self-storage facility. The entire site, including the proposed addition, requires a total of 39 parking spaces per the specific plan requirements. The submitted site plan indicates 39 parking spaces would be provided. The submitted floor plan indicates the interior of the building would be configured to accommodate a total of 236 self-storage locker facilities. Those lockers would range in size from 25 square feet up to 200 square feet. Interior access within the building would be provided by common corridors, two stairwells, as well as a elevator facility. The building would be two stories, a maximum height of 24 feet. The building would also increase in height to 27 feet at the elevator tower at the front elevation of the building. The proposed building has been designed to complement the existing storage facility. The exterior of the building would feature a stucco exterior with control joints and the elevator tower. Other enhancement would be reflective glass storefront systems on the front elevation facing east. The general plan land use industrial general, IG, allows for industrial uses, including self-storage facilities. In regards to the specific plan number eight development standards, the project before you tonight has been designed to comply with all applicable development standards. In terms of building height, the specific plan allows a maximum building height of 35 feet. The proposed building would be, reach a total height of 27 feet to the top of the elevator tower. In regards to parking, the specific plan would require 39 parking spaces for the self-storage facility, including the proposed addition. The submitted site plan indicates 39 parking spaces would be provided. In terms of architecture, the proposed building has been designed to complement the existing facility. With that, staff is recommending the planning commission grant the amendment to the previously approved special use permit and site development plan to construct a new 34,900-square-foot two-story self-storage building within the existing self-storage facility located at 1317 North Melrose Drive. That concludes staff's report. The applicant is here to answer any questions you might have tonight. And staff's here to answer questions as well.
So the applicant is just here to answer questions or do they have a presentation?
Actually, based on what we provided you, they felt comfortable with staff's presentation. They're here to introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name's Michael Markwart, post office box 1343, Rancho Santa Fe, California, 92067. Yes, as Michael indicated, just here to support, you know, the process.
Okay, very good. Stay close, we'll see what happens. This is a public hearing. We need to open the public hearing to anyone who wishes to address the commission on the project. I have no speaker slips. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Garretson.
Just a clarification. This is 460 feet, the way it is now. And this is going to be a 27-foot building, correct?
I didn't hear the first part of the question.
460 feet is the elevation where the building base is going to be.
The elevation, the grade elevation?
The grading elevation.
Okay.
According to the print there. You're going to add 27 feet, which is, which means it's going to be above the street level, the extension.
Which street are we talking about? Maryland or North Melrose Drive?
Maryland.
Maryland?
Extension of Maryland. I guess that's a private street.
Actually, the elevation of Maryland is actually eight foot taller than the grade of the recreational lot. So reality, it would only be, what, 19 feet taller than?
Taller than the adjacent street.
19 feet taller, but that blocks the view from those houses looking east. Right now, there's a tremendous view from that, from at least one of those houses looking east. Sunrise, East Vista Mountains. And this would basically block that view.
Yes.
Just confirming that.
Correct.
And have you talked to the neighbors? Or is that an inappropriate question?
Well, we did send out a notice package. So I believe the neighborhood has, you know, been made aware of our intent. We've not heard back anything in terms of a negative declaration, so.
Well, to me, if I lived in that house, I would think this is not compatible. It totally takes away my view.
One thing to note, the single-family homes across Maryland Drive are actually legal non-conforming. The actual zoning of those properties are actually specific plan number eight. So future development of those lots would be required to be industrial in nature. So in reality, they're maintaining their non-conforming status. However, any future development of those lots would have to be redevelop industrially.
But in the meantime, people live there.
Correct.
And people are having their view taken away by this development. I don't know. I hate to say it's only one house, but that's basically what we're saying.
And I would also, I guess I'd like to interject that it's not maybe a true 19 feet of, it's a perspective view. Because as you travel across Maryland and you get distance between you and the homes, it's actually a lesser impedance than the true 19 feet.
Well, but this, this street actually goes downhill where that house is. So this blocks that view, period. Because your lights are what, 20 feet? Your light posts in there?
At present, correct.
Yeah, and this is going to be 27 feet, so. All right, I just find that a little problematic that we, that we take away the view from these people and nobody bothered to talk to them, so.
Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Russell, I'm guessing that as normal, all the residences within the 500 feet were noticed?
That's correct, yeah. Per our code requirement, we're required to send notification to property owners and occupants for properties within 500 feet of the subject site. We did so 10 days prior to the public hearing and we received no comments from any of the neighbors.
Okay, so we've done our due diligence. And I don't believe that we have a ordinance, a view ordinance?
We do not, that's correct.
Okay, so they were noticed and I would assume that if they would have had issues, someone would have been here. So that's my two cents.
Another point that's been brought up to me is that on the east side of Maryland, there, as part of the previous development, plantings were made of large pine that also currently obstructs some of the view because they're, they are grown up above the wall height and that probably roughly the lighting standard height. So as, at present, there is, albeit natural, there is some viewed obstruction.
I actually took a photograph of the area in question and, yeah, that, I think these are the trees you refer to right here. So existing, there's a six-foot, there's actually a berm with a six-foot-high chain link fence. And then it slopes down into the site. But there is a tree line along that edge. But yeah, that's the existing condition that's out there that's being discussed right now.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? What would you like to do? Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seeing that there's no additional comments from the commissioners, I would like to go forward and adopt Resolution 2018 as presented in our, in the staff report.
Very good. Commissioner Looney? Commissioner Looney?
And I'll second that.
And it's, it's been moved in second to approve the project. Any further discussion? If not, cast your vote, please. And the motion is approved unanimously with Commissioner Jackal still, still absent, so.
Thank you all.
So, thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda, I'll have to apologize to Stephanie next, are reports from commission members and, and staff. I had one issue that I would like to bring up that I think we need to agendize for a future meeting. We had quite a discussion on the Terrace Lofts Apartments last time. And we were struggling between the 40 dwelling units per acre that was the, the plan proposed and yet the design for South Santa Fe proposed four stories, which gave them more density. So I, I would like to have a discussion at the commission sometime in the future where we talk about that issue, whether we're going to focus on design and what our vision for South Santa Fe and, and allow them to exceed the, the general plan density. Can, can we schedule that?
Sure. I, it's timely. I was going to mention several of the projects that have been approved down in that area. We did rely on larger lots that included either right-of-way that was dedicated or, for example, on Paseo Point, we used the park site to include in their net lot size. So we were able to kind of play with the density number of the building, but if you'd calculated out on an actual small net lot size, it's much higher than 40 units for several of the existing projects that we've approved. So we can kind of walk through that. I think the vision for Paseo and the envelopes that are already in the plan allow for a higher density, so.
Right.
It's a good discussion, discussion topic.
There's, back when I was still working, there's a movement going on with new urbanism that talked about Andreas, Duane and Seaside, Florida, where they do a form-based code. They write their development code to describe what they want to see and they don't worry so much about density as long as everybody has similar architectural styles, but different, so everything's not cookie cutter. And, and I think, and they don't worry, as I said, they don't worry so much about density. So I, I think we need to have that discussion about South Santa Fe, so. Commissioner Bill?
Thank you. On that note, if you have anyone else within the city or within the public in general that can contribute to the vision for that area, I think it'd be helpful. I think that, I just don't have a really good understanding beyond what's written into the city goals as to what the vision for that corridor is. And then I'm sure hearing some of the upcoming projects will be helpful. So beyond that, if you have anyone else that can.
Yeah, there's some really useful visual tools that, in GIS, that I think we might be able to use for that presentation. So I'll talk to our IT folks and see if we can do that.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to change subjects. The doghouse, Mr. Connolly?
We're hoping that before the end of the year, they open.
Wait, 2018?
Yes. They're getting closer. It's just, you know, there's always things that come up, but we're hoping in the next, you know, few weeks that they open. I don't have a date yet, I'm sorry.
I have walked by and I look, peer through the windows. It's, they got the menu up there, just dying to have a hot dog.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Connolly?
I just wanted to update. Sure, I appreciate that. The council did approve the project at Sycamore and Watson for 56 single-family homes, came before you for recommendation a couple of months ago. They will hear the downtown specific plan update on the 25th, next Tuesday. There's no other community development items scheduled to go before the council until really the election in November. With regard to the discussion on Santa Fe, it'll probably come back in a November or December timeframe. We have a lot of early design review projects that are going to be coming forward over the next couple of months. Patsy, did you want to add anything to that?
And we are not having a meeting on October the 2nd, so the next one will be October the 16th.
October 16th?
That's correct.
All right. Anything else, commissioners? All right. Then we will stand adjourned until October 16th. Rancho students, bring your forms forward and we will sign them for you. Thank you for coming tonight.